Probably help if I turn on microphone, huh? So Mark, I'll turn it over to you to kick us off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is our first night of three scheduled twenty twenty four budget meetings, budget workshops with the board. Tonight will be a busy night. We plan to go over the capital and the general fund operating budgets. We're gonna save the sewer fund operating budget until next Monday's meeting, the sixteenth. So we, we do have a lot of information to go over to present to the board. With that said, I'll turn it over to Terry for her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to let everyone know that the documents this evening that we're going to review were drafted under the direction of the township manager and a coordinated effort by all of the directors. I want to thank the directors for their time and their efforts during this process. I also want to thank Angel Diaz, who's joining us this evening and providing IT assistance. Like Mark said, we have a lot to cover this evening. So let's get started. We'll cover the five-year capital improvements plan first. Presentation will review, first of all, give you a description of what the capital improvement plans does for the township. We'll review the total request for twenty twenty four. We'll focus on the twenty twenty four items by department as well as how they were built into the budget. We'll look at funding options and then finally recommendations. So what is a capital improvements plan? Known as the CIP, for Spring, it's Berry. The plan covers five years, twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight. The total request for this year of those five years, the total dollar amount is twenty two million, three hundred forty six thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. This is a working document. It lists potential and proposed capital improvements. These items are priced over five thousand dollars and have an extended useful life. For example, a useful life can range from three years for computer hardware or software all the way to sixty years for infrastructure improvements. The list of capital improvements go under, can be categorized a few ways. Construction renovations, repairs and maintenance for equipment. All of these items are requested by department were requested on estimated costs. The CIP provides information for strategic planning versus a guide for future cash flow needs. As a working document, the CIP can be modified, refined, or items eliminated based on the changing needs of the township. The totals by department for administration, we currently have the facilities, construction and Davies Drive. Both projects are either completed or close to completion. I have those on the list because there are still some outstanding business with both of those projects and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Community development requests ten thousand dollars. The finance department has no capital items at this time. The water quality MS four fund requests one hundred eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. For information technology, items recommended by elevated MSP. Hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars. For the police, the department requests five hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred dollars of that amount. The training simulator is one hundred and seventy five dollars, one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And that was listed in the twenty twenty three CIP also. The police department is researching and looking for grant funding and other sources of funding for that project. For parks and recreation, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars is requested for twenty twenty four. Public Works, two million ninety seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. For wastewater treatment for the inter municipal group, one that one million, six hundred ninety five thousand. And for spring, it's very sewer, one million, six hundred and fifteen thousand. All capital improvements, the total funds for twenty twenty four equals six million, three hundred forty thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. In addition to the list that we just went through, the township also supports the offers capital equipment plan. And our twenty twenty four contribution is one hundred eighty six thousand, five hundred and ninety three dollars. And that is built into the capital improvement fund. Next, let's, let's look at the funding by department. On the fleet station administration building, of course, are complete. They were funded by a general obligation bond and we received a RAPPE grant for three point five million dollars. The, the RAPPE grant funding has yet to be received and we don't expect to receive those funds until sometime in twenty twenty four. For Davies Drive, the railroad crossing is just about complete. We do look forward to York County grant funding of one hundred and seventy five thousand. We do expect to get that by the end of the year. Other grants total over eight hundred thousand dollars. I would be surprised if we receive those either late December or early January. So we might be looking at a twenty twenty four receipt on those also. For community development, other quest this year is a multi-year archiving project. It's a long-term project. It's ten thousand dollars and it's built into the general fund. For MS four, the water quality program, our construction is a little bit up in the air. Things are on hold based on our twenty twenty five, twenty twenty eight permit cycle, and that's on delay from the state. So we are anticipating projects in the future. At this time, we're pretty limited. And the funding for those projects come from grants, York County Stormwater Consortium and also are supported by general fund reserves. For the information technology, we have annual computer equipment replacements, those for laptop and PC replacements. That's an annual item that is close to thirty, twenty five thousand, I believe it is this year. Storage replacement for admin and police, storage replacement for wastewater treatment, both recommendations from elevated MSP. Also, we have some software upgrades and funding. It's all part of the capital improvements fund. For the police, we have our annual vehicle custom outfit that follows a vehicle replacement schedule with enterprise fleet management services. The body camera services server, this is a high cost item for the police department, but necessary for operations. The training simulator we mentioned earlier, and we have a Cody Pathfinder software, all of that one through the capital improvement fund. Next, for public works, we have vehicle replacements. Those are annual requests and that follows a replacement schedule for the use and wear and tear of the, the equipment. We have road material storage bins that would be built to public works or wastewater treatment facility. We have traffic signal improvements that construction is in progress and there are state grants to support those projects. The sidewalk at the Giant and Lowe's Plaza is also a grant, state grant. Our cost is eighty five thousand, seven hundred dollars. That is in the design phase. The security and lighting upgrades for Spring is Berry Park. That's also a state grant. With that is in the design phase. We have stormwater crossings, stormwater rehabilitation for miscellaneous locations, and that's an annual expenditure. All the funding is through the capital improvements fund and we do have grant funding for traffic signals, the pedestrian sidewalk and security upgrades. Parks and Recreation, we have a land study for camp security that is a DCNR grant. Fayfield playground equipment needs to be replaced and we have signed replacement for all parks, which is in progress. All the funding is through the Recreation Reserve Fund and we also have grant funding. For wastewater treatment, the inter municipal sewer, we have a biosolids handling study that is in progress. We have the Mill Creek Interceptor realignment project. That's a multi-year project, two point four million dollars. We have a secondary clarifiers upgrade. That's also a multi-year project, one point nine million dollars. Ultraviolet disinfectant electronics, that's an upgrade for twenty twenty four. And then a roof replacement has been requested for the collection building at the wastewater treatment facility. And the funding would come from the inter municipal sewer reserve fund. For wastewater treatment, the spring experience very sewer, we have rehabilitation for various neighborhoods, the Fayfield neighborhood. We have a grinder pump replacement, East York Pump Station Valve and Force Main Bypass Replacement. That's a project of one point four million dollars and manhole frames and covers is an annual expense and all of those are funded by the sewer fund. For funding options, the administration, we have grant funding for twenty twenty three projects. We need development through the capital improvements fund. MS four and water quality is grant funding, York County Consortium and the general fund reserves. Information technology is part of the capital improvements fund and sewer fund. Police, we have capital improvements fund and possible grant funding. Public Works, capital improvements fund and grant funding for projects in, in progress. We have parks and recreation, Recreation Reserve Fund and Grant Funding, and then wastewater treatment is coming from the reserves. For other funding sources, our gaming revenue, our restricted funds. All of those revenue dollars are moved into the capital improvements fund for long-term projects. We have grant funding coming from federal, state and county sources. And we will also have some funding left in the American Rescue Plan Act or funding. It's most likely those funds will be used to support contract services for fire and rescue in the future. And then finally, we have our recommendations, our vehicles and equipment are seeing still supply delays. We are requesting items to be ordered this year to be received next year as well as ordering in twenty twenty four for receipt in twenty twenty five. So we're still waiting on some things this year. The grant funding, just a reminder that the application process and funding procedures is a detailed process. There are multiple steps involved. We need to have projects ready to meet application requirements. We need to monitor the process for the deadlines in place. We need to meet the recording requirements, reporting requirements. Create audit trail for future state and federal audits. And we have to finance those projects to make sure we have the money in place and then wait for reimbursement later. And that concludes my overview of the capital improvements plan. Have any questions?
Terry, I was on that last point. If we go back to slide, the funding, yeah, the funding options. Some of this is intuitive, but as I look at the, the grant funding highlights and recall some of our conversations. How many of these are forward-looking grants? That is to say, stuff that we haven't yet to apply for.
That's a question for Mark. I'm not sure how many grants are in progress at the moment. The application process, what I have listed here are grants that have already been awarded.
That's kind of what I thought. Do we have any grants that are, are critical to the capital investment plan? For twenty four? In other words, is there, is there a grant that we have yet to apply for that affects this budget that you're counting on the money?
The only one that comes to mind that we haven't applied for would be the simulator, police simulator.
Okay, that's kind of what I was thinking because we haven't heard about that grant.
So along those lines, do we have the current resources internally, personnel resources to stay on top of everything that we have? And look for new grants because I don't want this to drop off now and not have any grants following on because we don't have the resources to go out and look for them and apply for them and manage that whole process.
That position is currently out for applications.
Okay, so we're advertising for that. Yeah, I, in a way, I, I think we're at a pivot point to your point. Chairman, is that we want to make sure we continue that momentum and see what the next project, it sounds like just overall on the CIP that we've got projects, we've got funds, we've got grants all pretty much lined up in the queue that to your point, Terry, that we have to, we have to pay for it first and then wait forever for reimbursement. But it sounds like we're, that's all tied together with grants, but for the simulator.
Mark, Mark and I had a conversation recently about the RAPPE grant. We applied for the grant. We were added to the list with an amount of five million dollars. We were awarded three point five million. So that's one point five million that we should reapply to see if we can be awarded the second part of those funds. So that's something that we should look at in the future.
They often consider a second by the apple.
Other municipalities have been awarded the second part of their requests.
We should go after it then. The answer's no unless be asked.
A question for capital pertaining to the study that Boucard Horn has been working on for some time and I've seen comments, it's gone back unfortunately, them and staff or comments. Two questions. First, do we know when we're going to see that? And second, is there a possibility to have any, any capital needs for the budget that comes out of that study for next year?
To answer those in order. The study is still going back and forth between Danny and Boucard Horn, and that was the study to look at diversion pump station and our relationship with the city's former plant. I don't, I don't believe, I'm fairly certain there won't be anything that comes out of that study that will be near future. It would be long-term because the, the dollars, if we were ever going to pull that trigger, it's significant, it would be, it's going to be significant.
And do we know when we're going to see that study?
Hopefully soon, but I don't want to give you, you'll have it next week type of thing.
Oh, go ahead.
If we go to public works.
Danny, you want to come up to the?
The capital for the bridge replacement on what road is that?
Industrial highway.
Industrial highway over near.
That is not that. The bridge replacements are three different other stormwater things. But I believe the chairman's asking about that bridge.
Yes.
Oh, that's paid for a hundred percent by federal funds.
The one with federal funds.
Right.
And we don't have to do anything to go after that and we don't have to manage that one.
Correct. There will be some moderate, I shouldn't say moderate, there will be minor expenses. Because the only thing that won't fund is for the township engineer to join me at meetings to make sure everything's in the township's favor. They won't reimburse first capital invoices, so.
Won't reimburse for us to watch them.
But other than that, they'll, everything's covered, including right of way.
But First Capital is not designing the project.
No, their, their seat at the table would be to assist me.
Sure, and protect our interests.
Could we move that expense to capital?
I don't know what the expense is going to be.
Budget for it.
Yeah, that should be any of those efforts that oversee a design at least in my world would be considered a capital item. It's part of the cost of the capital project.
Or the project, sure.
We, we can code it that, we could code it that way, but there's, I don't, there's no way to get a number that it's going to cost five thousand or two thousand.
Right, right. No, I understand that.
Yeah, I do too. Just freeze up operating.
Right.
Terry, I, I have another question. Going back to your slide three. Where we have the five-year plan of twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight, twenty two million. Could you refresh our memory a little bit? What did this kind of look like pre-inflation, pre-pandemic and pre namely casino money?
Well, it's kind of difficult to compare it because we had such large projects as part of the total plan because of this building and Davies Drive.
Yeah.
So that was another, you know, seventeen million dollars that were added. So this actually, the twenty two million is probably the lowest five-year CIP plan I've done.
That, that's okay.
So I did want to ask another question about traffic studies and and road improvements. And I'll just make a comment. I have seen Mount Zion get worse and worse and worse to a point now where at rush hour traffic is backed up all the way over the crest of the hill and, and sometimes partway down the hill toward Druff Valley. And I know that's a state road. What can we do? To move that along? And that's either of you gentlemen.
Well, the signals were just studied within the last two years. And I don't recall, it's studied by the state. The state hired a third-party engineering firm.
A little better, I assume.
I would assume, but I, I can't confirm that. And no suggestions were made as far as we need a timing change or anything like that. There are.
Way beyond time and change to fix that.
There are some equipment items that need replaced at the Route thirty signals. And as soon as the bid that we're going out with cooperative municipal bid, as soon as we have that under contract, then we can look at that.
So I'll tell you, the bottleneck is Mount Zion Pleasant Valley, not Route thirty. Because once you get to the two lanes, as soon as you get past the Pleasant Valley intersection, everything opens up. It's the signal there at Pleasant Valley that backs everything up all the way over the hill. And it can take five, six, seven light cycles before you get down from like Alcott Road all the way down through. I mean, it's a, it's a significant amount of time. And that's for probably an hour and a half to two hours at either end of the deck. So.
We can definitely have some love at that.
Any other roads that are in our control that we can take care of issues like that.
Well, just to clarify, I think the board realizes this. Even though a traffic signal is on a state road, the municipality is still responsible for it. The hidden thing that's not there is we just can't make changes to it at a whim. The state ultimately controls the traffic signal permit. So we, the controller has to match the per, what the permit says. So even though the municipality is responsible for it, we just can't go out and say this needs change and that needs change. So that's where it gets beyond our scope and would have to get to traffic engineer.
So what I'm telling you is it's, it's way beyond the light. Changing the light by a few seconds. Even twenty seconds probably isn't going to change it a whole lot. There's going to need to be a right turn lane at the bottom. There's probably going to be, need to be two through lanes so that you can get more people down into that section so that more traffic can flow into the intersection during a light cycle. There's just way too much traffic coming over Mount Zion.
There is. Alcott's a good, good example, a good point to mention. There's a lot of people will turn on to Alcott to try to get around, turn down Alcott and down memory lane extended and try to get to Whiteford Road.
And if they don't get it there, they'll turn down over.
Overview.
Cut down through and try to come around by the township.
Davies Drive will do nothing to alleviate any of that or?
No, Davies Drive is on the other side of thirty.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought.
I won't do anything there.
Or there's four lights from Pleasant Valley to Market Street. Pleasant Valley, then there's one.
They don't, they don't back up that much. I mean, you can get through, you can get through that section with one light cycle, once you're past Pleasant Valley. I guess that's my two cents from now.
Mark, did our transportation plan that we did, did that include something of an alternative route?
It, it did include, I don't, it's up around Colonial Lane, which is a private lane. Not far south from Alcott. It, it included like a roundabout there, if I can remember correctly, and then a roadway that kind of went up at an angle to get to dining or road. Yes, it did include that.
Again, put my two cents in, putting a roundabout halfway down Mount Zion Hill is not a good idea.
I agree. I'm just saying what the.
I know, same up with that, somebody who had some experience with roundabouts in Oregon near the coast.
Uh, that was kind of McMahon, I thought came up with that.
Was it?
Yeah, I thought. They, they said it was geographic or geometrically possible. Right there at Druck Valley.
Geometrically possible.
Even considering the slope.
Within the bounds of common sense, don't necessarily match.
Yeah, I think.
Well, we're not going to solve it tonight, but we do need to take a look at how we're going to move traffic around in sections of the township that, that are overburdened. I mean, Route thirty is another one. I mean, there's probably nothing we can even do about that, but.
Route thirties. I think if anyone can answer that, you would be wealthy person. It's just, I think it's oversaturated. That's my opinion. And without adding extra roadway, I don't think.
Yeah, that's not going to change.
The, the roadways in Spring, it's buried minus thirty that are congested. In addition to Mount Zion would be Haynes Road. So Haynes Road, we already talked about memory lane. So it's the same roadway, Haynes Road, memory lane from Sheets. So Industrial Highway, the whole way to Route one twenty four. Mount Rose, I knew that, that gets severely congested. And Edgewood, which is the same roadway as Mount Zion Road. It's starting to, when the state did all the improvements up at Longstown Intersection, it was great. And over the last several months, I noticed that the traffic now is starting to stack, coming back down the hill again towards Kingston Road, southbound traffic is. So I don't know if it's.
Downhill.
Southbound traffic is stacking.
Coming from Route thirty to Kingston Road.
You know, from Kingston to Edgewood.
Edgewood.
I experienced that a lot.
When they did all the work at Mount, at Longstown and Mount Rose, for that couple of years, there was hardly anything.
Yep.
It really did a nice job. Now it's starting to come back. The old stacking that you would have the whole way down to Kingston Road and beyond is starting to show up again. And I don't know if that's just we have more population. People are finding other routes and they're choosing, I, I don't know what it is, but I've noticed that. So those, those roadways and, and Market Street around eighty-three gets bad. From eighty-three to, to Haynes Road gets bad.
And industrial highway has been crazy too, as of late, because of that ramp closure, forcing everybody to work through that lighting panel.
Yeah, that's more of an.
And then industrial highway, out of all those roadways, industrial highway is the only township owned roadway.
Yeah, I meant North Hills Road, sorry. Yeah, yeah. And there's even some stacking there at North Hills Road on industrial too. I've noticed, and the bay, certain time, part of time. Has Pendock come up with the idea to put a tunnel under Mount Zion?
You're waiting for the flying cars.
I don't, I don't know that it's Mount Zion is the problem. I think it's. I don't, I don't know that it's Mount Zion is the problem. I think it's when you hit the traffic cycle going going west on Route thirty. When you come first to North Hills and then to Sherman and backs up.
If you're talking thirty, yeah, well, east, well, well, once you're past North Hills Road on thirty, then you've got a clean shot.
Clean shot into all the traffic congestion in the city.
No, if you're heading east.
If you're east, you're fine.
Eastern, you're right. It's coming into North, North Hills Road is bottleneck. So what do you do if you, we've talked over years about the flyover that you just go straight through North Hills and then well, then guess what? Your next hit's going to be right there at Harlem.
Sherman.
Sherman, Sherman would be right. Flyover, Sherman. Thirty has gotten bad, though.
Back to the original design, where it was intended to be a bypass route around York.
Yes.
And then they decided to keep it at the same level, street level, so that all those businesses.
Exactly.
And ended up with six or eight lights on it and supposed to like Lancaster, where you get on thirty, drive right around Lancaster.
Yeah.
You have ramps to get off and get on.
They did that in Rochester, New York, on Ridge Road. It was originally at the same level as all of the malls and prostitutes.
Elevated it?
They elevated it and had off ramps onto service roads.
Way to handle it. But it's very expensive and very time consuming.
We put up the list of capital projects. That list there. Mr. Chairman, do you want actors to go over their list for twenty twenty four?
Yeah, let's, let's do that. I had one other question about MS four. I mean, we've satisfied potentially through twenty-five. Can we do ahead? And get into the permit cycle beyond and reduce further so that we don't incur debt in the future?
I'm getting about twenty twenty.
For that.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four prices.
Do it, yeah.
Yeah.
The complication is D E P hasn't released what their new, new goalpost is going to be. And but speculation and good speculation, reliable speculation is, it's not going to be focused on sediment reduction like this current permit cycle is, it's going to be more focused on volume control. What that exactly means, I don't know, but if that is true, then we could do work thinking that we're going down on the sediment and it not apply.
So just taking a practical look at stormwater, which is more detrimental to the township? Sediment or volume?
Without having the parameters, my, my gut feeling is.
I don't mean to the Susquehanna and the, and the Chesapeake Bay, I don't mean MS four guidelines that we've had to follow in the past. What is most detrimental to our citizens?
Volume control, my opinion, but I don't know what the parameters are. But if you just think logically about it, any municipality that is urbanized is going to have already a set of volume leaving the impervious surfaces. And obviously Springitzberry is pretty urbanized.
I was going to say every resident that comes in here to complain about something is about something washing out. And that's, it causes sediment, but it's not caused by sediment. Caused by volume.
Mm-hmm. So. But I believe that is going to be the, some of the complaints I've heard over the years, someone comes in for a shed. They just want to put in an eight by ten shed, whatever size it is, and the amount of money that they have to spend for the stormwater controls for that eight by ten shed or, or some significant number more than the actual shed cost. So if that's part of volume control and even more so, I, I, again, we're not knowing the parameters. It's hard for me to say which one's going to be more expensive.
I remember one time, and you might remember this, Charles, on the planning commission, John was talking about a, a development where they had a pretty large drop and their stormwater management had no brakes in the drop. And he had them put in, I, I don't know what those boxes were intermediate, it would hit, have the water stop or slow down and then drop again. And it was a volume control measure. Didn't have to necessarily be less runoff to control the volume, but it had to break the speed of the flow.
Yeah, so it would collect at that one point before then tipping over.
Collect and then drop, collect and then drop. Instead of just trying to get the water out of there as fast as you can, because then you have a washout problem at the bottom. Control it all the way down. You know what the total volume will be through there in a given period of time, and that's what you're designed to, but are there other ways to control it other than putting the burden on the shed owner?
I'm sure there are, but I don't, I don't know what that would be at this time.
These questions are all meant to, to, yeah, I don't have the answers to it. I'm just trying to get everybody thinking about what can we do? To, first of all, meet our goals ahead of schedule so that we don't incur future debt. Second of all, what's the best thing we can do for our residents? So that we can alleviate headaches for them? And how can we do some of these things without putting the burden on a small homeowner, for instance, with a shed? How else can we tackle volume control? There have to be ways to, to think about this that are outside of the box that and because, I mean, we're in a position where we have some money to do some things if, if they can, you know, really benefit the community, benefit our residents and set us up for longer term success and growth.
Yeah, I agree.
So, all right, let's, let's get into.
Chief, you want to go up first?
Good evening, everybody. So our capital, I'm going to pull my phone up here with it because I can't see the monitor, so. Our five-year capital improvements, starting with twenty twenty-four, include our standard vehicle outfitting. This price has remained pretty constant for the last several years. And we project it to remain that way upcoming, mainly because to offset the price increases and many of the things we're getting, we're able to finally, the platform has been standardized. So we're able to move some of our equipment over from our old cars to the new cars without sacrificing any operability. That would be the first thing. The training simulator is our second thing for twenty twenty-four. I can tell you, to answer an earlier question, we have two separate grants that we're looking at for the training simulator. The first grant, and I'm, I'm fully dedicated to get the training simulator funded by grant funding. It's not something we need to put into building immediately, so I'm looking at every opportunity we can to do so. First grant is the second part of the de-escalation grant that we had spoken to you about last year. Springitzberry Township leads the way in your county right now in de-escalation. We signed on for a grant with the Department of Justice. The Department of Justice has granted the first half of that grant, which includes training half of the four hundred plus officers throughout your county in de-escalation. The second part of that grant should come up in twenty twenty-four. And one of the ways we can fund the simulator is through that second half of the de-escalation grant. Then the simulator becomes part of de-escalation training throughout the county, a shared service for all the, the county and participating agencies. The other grant that we're looking at is the actual shared services grant, the local chair services grant, which is funded through gaming funding for the simulator. The big ticket item we have this year is the in-car body and camera server and setup. So we had a plan moving forward up to this year to replace our in-car cameras and our body cameras as needed. Every year they would come up, three to five years for the body cameras and then every year the outfitting for the vehicles. We ran into a problem in twenty twenty-two in that Motorola bought out WatchGuard. Initially in twenty twenty-two, we were told that it wasn't going to be a problem. They were going to continue the services that they had. We found that that was not the case. Motorola has now not only changed the hardware, but we got a notice in July this year of twenty twenty-three that they're now going to stop service to their software product. So basically our evidence library, which contains all of our videos, will no longer be under service contract as of the end of the year. This made us move into looking to how do we replace the system? And the one thing I didn't want to fall into was getting into another situation with a smaller company, as WatchGuard was, that would then end up getting bought out and be back in the same position in the next couple of years. So we started looking, we, we tested three different body cameras and in-car cameras. The one we came up with that was the best option for us is through the Axon Company. The Axon Company is also known as the Taser Company, which we already have that particular brand of a weapon, as well as they also have an evidence platform, a digital evidence platform. So what we're looking to do is actually fund, it's a three hundred thousand dollar total buy over a five-year period. But that puts you into a contract with Axon. Axon then, you're not really just buying a single body camera like we did with WatchGuard. You're actually buying a program where the body cameras will be replaced three times. You'll get your initial payout. Two and a half years into the program, they will do it, do an upgrade where you get all new equipment. And then five years at the end of your contract, they do an additional upgrade where you get all of your equipment replaced a second time. The in-car cameras are the same way, only they only have two replacement cycles, one at the beginning and one at the end. The nice part about that is all your technology remains the same. You know, you're at the, the cutting edge of the technology. If, if it's, if they have something new that comes out, you get that with your upgrade. We also would be upgrading our evidence dot com software to include not only the information for the simulator, I'm sorry, not the simulator, the body cameras and in-car camera, but also for all of our digital evidence across the entire police department. So any photos, videos, anything that we get in, we now would have a digital way to store it securely at the police station. And it comes part of the evidence dot com software. Additionally to that, one of the deals that they made us in a bundle type situation is to upgrade Taser. Taser has upgraded now from Taser seven to Taser ten, which is due to come out next year. They would automatically upgrade us with this cost right to the Taser ten and have that new technology as well. The last thing in twenty twenty-four is the Cody Pathfinder upgrade. I have good news on this. It appears, I don't have complete confirmation yet, but it appears our Cody Pathfinder upgrade, including all costs for the Cody software, is going to be covered by that infamous L L E grant that I've been writing you about in my report for the last several months. The eighty one hundred dollars will be covered for the upgrade to Pathfinder, plus all our costs for the next two years for Cody and the software. I'm waiting to hear actual confirmation on that. I hate to bring that up prematurely, but every indication is that's where we're looking right now. I actually have a contract. I'm waiting to hear some more information back on to sign with Cody for this particular project, which would help us quite, quite tremendously. The next thing would be in twenty twenty-five, and that would be the portable radios. What has happened with the portable radios is they've reached end of life cycle. The original radios were bought by the county. The county still has an outstanding balance on that, but they are ending the life cycle of these portable radios. Twenty twenty-five is the interim year. So in, the end of twenty twenty-four, firmware stops being updated and then the end of twenty twenty-five into twenty twenty-six, they're stopped, they're stopping the manufacturing of the portable radio that we currently have. Again, that's another project I'm looking at grants for. I can tell you that the York County Safety Colab has looked into that as well to come up with a way to have this be a multiple agency issue because it's not only going to affect the police departments across the county, it's also going to affect EMS and fire departments. We're looking at different ways to fund that coming up in the future. Then in twenty twenty-six, I put in for a Faro three D scanner. Faro three D scanner would take the place of our aging total stations equipment. Total stations is what we use to document crime scenes forensically and also document accident scenes. Total, the total stations we have is many years old. The technology is getting a bit outdated. Nice part about the Faro three D scanner is, first of all, it's a one-person operation. Total stations is a two-person operation, so you cut down on manpower. The second great thing about it is it basically takes a digital picture of the scene. So how total stations works is you actually go through and pick each individual item and mark it like you would with surveying equipment. That doesn't happen with the scanner, the scanner, the scanners scans the entire area and it puts everything down. And then you pick later what you want as evidence. So you always run into the risk with the total stations of if you don't mark it, you don't have it. With scanner, you don't, that doesn't happen anymore. You have it and then you can go back and pull it back up if you need to be. So it's a much more advanced item, takes less time, less manpower. And then the final item in twenty twenty-seven is a list of possible L P R locations, which are license plate readers. License plate readers are something that the manager and I have, have spoken of. We do not have a hashed out plan for this yet. This is in here as a marker. Something to think about in the future. And this is a relatively large estimate on what it's going to be for that particular item. And that would be, that six hundred thousand dollar cost would be a total of ten intersections throughout the township, most ingress and egress routes. I can tell you that when we had the kidnapping of the child down at Earl Farms, I would have given anything to have license plate readers to know which direction that vehicle left the township. Luckily, we picked up some license plate readers that were not ours heading down to Philadelphia, and that's where we ended up getting the information we did to eventually locate that child. The license plate readers, if we, if we do this plan intentionally and deliberately, we can tie them into a network of license plate readers, not just here in the township, but across the state. If we have the same type software and the, these companies actually have agreements with each other, that would take the network of them and not expand our ten for the township itself, but make it exponentially larger with all those, the, all the other license plate readers that are out there. So that then has a recurring cost, I'm estimating about fifty thousand a year for the maintenance of those cam, those ten cameras, basically ten thousand dollars intersection. And that would be, oh, and then the other thing in twenty twenty-seven is the, an upgrade to our weapon system are basically our handguns. As you know, we upgrade those every eight years to make certain that the, the guns stay. We fire a lot of rounds through them throughout the, the, the years that we have them. And we want to make sure they stay up to the optimum operating capability. So that's why we have that in there again as a recurring cost in twenty twenty-seven.
Well, we have license plate readers in front of the Starbucks and in the land's parking lot.
Well, I can tell you this. I can tell you that one of the upgrades with the Axon in-car cameras is they come with mobile license plate readers in the cameras. So that make, that will make that really nice and really easy. Yes. We have people sitting down there on a regular basis because of the problem with the Starbucks and yeah, we discussed that quite a bit.
I have more pictures.
So good, send them to me. If you have license plate numbers, let me know.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That license plate reader system of six hundred thousand looking out there in twenty-seven, is that a new trend in all police departments of our similar size? Would we be the first? Are we kind of lagging?
I'd say we're about where our, our neighboring agencies are. Everybody's looking at them at this point. They're. There's several grants that some places have gotten. I've looked at the mobile and the, and the stationary, I'm, I'm. More apt to go towards the stationary, the mobile coming with. The upcar upgrade in the in-car cameras is, is just a plus. It's nothing that I was looking for. The stationary, I think are much more advantageous. You think about, let's for instance, North Hills Road and Route thirty. We've had five shootings in there in the five years that I've been or five attempted shootings in five years that I've been chief. And. To have it, have an actual LPR there to pick that information up will help us solve that, those crimes so much quicker. Give us the information we need and the vehicles that are moving through the area. It's, it's. Things that police departments are doing in problem areas. I know, for instance, Newbury Township has one right outside their Walmart. I would think the Northern Way, East Market Street intersection would be a great place. And this is an expandable project as well. I mean, if we find that it's advantageous, we can expand it. If we find it's not, we can. You know, pull back, but I, I think that yes, that is the trend that everybody's moving.
Interesting stuff.
Thank you, I hope.
Questions? Thanks, Steve.
I'm going to take care of. The. Community development and the IT, which, which Terry did do a good job on the IT already. The community development department. Mostly is MS four related. If you look across, it's. The unknown, when we go out to twenty twenty six, there's unknown expenses, expenses there because of new permit cycle. But. Everything else included there is televising of our stormwater pipes and the like. And then with the IT, it's. The equipment that Terry already highlighted. For both wastewater treatment and admin. Any questions on any of that? One last thing is in twenty twenty five, I do have a placeholder. There for an electronic sign out. In front of, not in front of this building, but in front of the parking lot for this building. But zoning, if that will only apply of zoning changes.
I support the electronic sign.
But everybody comes in once.
That is the unintended, that is an intended consequence. Actually, we have electronic signs here already in the tension.
But we have some strict controls on how often they can turn.
And I don't think that every one of those is adhering to that. Danny?
Good evening. I have an awful lot of things in here, so I'm probably not going to go into the detail that the chief just went in. Tell you right now, or we'll be here till tomorrow morning. So. I'm gonna hit this a little more rapid fire. First thing for this year is this coming year, I should say, is the sidewalk at Market Street. You're all very up at Giant, you guys are. Pretty aware of what's happening there. Our portion is fifty eight thousand seven hundred with a four hundred and thirty thousand eighty dollar safety grant. Next would be replace vehicle twenty six. Well, this is something that we ordered. A little while ago and it's going to be a little while till it gets here, second quarter of. Of twenty four. For the chassis and then the update from that. So.
This is already approved, just.
Already approved, already.
All right, move on.
Taken care of. Place vehicle sixteen. This is a lease vehicle or will be a lease vehicle. The fifty five thousand dollars is fifty percent of the outfit. But then it goes into the lease program versus what we have now. F five fifty dump truck. Forklift or replace our existing forklift, which is eighty seven ninety seven. So it's nineteen ninety seven. With. A more useful in different situations forklift. We saw these forklifts at a local business. Did a little research, research into these and as you can see from the picture, they have buckets with them. So it's sort of a dual purpose piece now that we'd be able to use this for snow removal. In the smaller parking lot areas as well. So it's not just a forklift, it can be a forklift at any time, but it can telescope out. And would also have a bucket for snow removal. Or some of our tighter areas that we have in our new building.
Pictures, I'm looking at a. Kind of a spreadsheet here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those pictures are on notes.
Not in the presentation.
It's a JCB teletruck is what they are. So it's a forklift that has an extendable boom. And you can put buckets on them.
The information's on page thirty six of the capital improvements plan. I can bring it up here. Do you want me to bring it up on the screen? So you can take a look at it.
That would help, Terry.
I'm there.
EDF thirty six or packet thirty six?
Packet thirty six.
They are the same.
Questions on that one? Okay, then the next one is. Replacement of memory lane industrial highway, all the traffic signal equipment. The, the cost is going to come in next year. Because they're actually just getting started on it right now. Main road, Eastern Boulevard, same thing. They've actually started on that after we meet with them tomorrow to look at some complications. But the boring for both of those sites is underway now. So. The cost is in the year that you'll expect to pay it.
Danny, I don't know if now's the right time to ask the question, but I noticed. With industrial and memory lane, the grant pays for about two thirds of the work. We pay for a third of it. With Haynes Acres and Eastern or Haynes Road and Eastern Boulevard. We pay for two thirds and they only, the grant only pays for a third. I didn't know if there was a reason for that or. If that's just the way the grants work.
That's just how the grant funding was approved.
Projects, yeah. Are they both green light going?
They are Arly.
Arly.
Yep, which is from PennDOT, two separate pools of money.
A miscellaneous sidewalk replacement. Sidewalks are ours to replace there. I put fifty thousand dollars a year in, doesn't really replace that much sidewalk each year. But it's sort of a placeholder for sidewalks and ADA ramps. Anytime we're going to do a paving project, we have to replace the, the ramps with ADA ramps as well. So. That's the placeholder for that. The next is concrete, new concrete material bins. The intent of this was going to be at public works. Sort of a quick and dirty, how do we handle our stone more efficiently? And if we get into another year of very little snow, we're going to have a whole lot of salt coming this year. We have to put somewhere. That's why one was covered. Now. Actually, we found that all bins now have to be covered. Stone, they're everything so that we don't create runoff from. The stone. So what we've done at this point is we've moved all of our stockpiles down to wastewater because that's on a pad that goes to a treatment pond that goes through the system. However. We really. It's the way it is. I can't change it.
That a DEP mandate?
Yes. EPA, EPA. EPA. So.
Don't, don't we create more impervious surface by covering it?
Apparently the. The other states going to the Chesapeake Bay. Wasn't, we're not happy with EPA approving Pennsylvania's plan. Say suit EPA. To force Pennsylvania to do more. So part of that. Agreement that was made, the settlement was EPA was going to come around and do. Unscheduled, scheduled. Reviews of all municipalities. To make sure that we're meeting all the EPA roles on these things. So just recently we got a flyer from another engineering firm that said, hey, here's what. DP put out that said they're going to EPA is going to be looking for. And there's an, a pretty decent list.
Money to change this?
Have you dealt with EPA lately? Just wondering? So the plan is right now. Instead of open bins, because if we have to enclose them all, that's a considerably bigger project. So there's a lot of moving targets here. If we do get a weak winter. There are three bins down at wastewater that we can patch up and cover and we can put salt down in them. So that's the salt portion. So that was my big worry was. If we have another week winner, we have to buy the salt that we already ordered. And our salt bin is hit flow over. It is very full right now. So.
We have to keep on buying.
Well, you, you pre-buy the salt the year before you order it.
Can I just ask a stupid question? Do we have to cover all the road surfaces that we put the salt on?
Apparently not, no.
So we're covering it so that it won't wash into stormwater, but we can spread it everywhere where it will wash into stormwater. And that's not a problem?
Apparently not.
Are these people brain dead?
You may not want to mention that to the EPA.
I'm not, I'm not qualified to answer that question.
I mean, it just boggles the mind how stupid people can be and how. They can find jobs for themselves to keep everybody else running around spending all kinds of stupid money.
All stone piles, all scrap piles. Pretty much anything you can put on a pile needs to be in a covered bin now. A covered bin. So. Doesn't need to make sense, just needs to check a box. That's what this money was for. The intent of this money was for that.
Why can't we just turn around and have a lawsuit against them if, if they dumped everything on us because somebody had a lawsuit against them?
Again, I'm not qualified to answer that either. Man, this is over there might be the one to do that.
I'm just. Hung by the stupidity.
Yes.
The stored mulch is the same way, but once you spread the mulch under the bushes, then it's okay because.
Absolutely. Mulch is high on their list, has to be in a covered spot. Covered pile. Yes.
Are you building bins in North Hills Park then? Up top there?
No, no, wastewater is where we put everything now. Only we, we put it at wastewater. Because. Well, there's still a mulch pile up here, but that's going to be spread here within this week. We'll put it at wastewater. That's all on a pad that drains to a pond that is pumped out and treated with our wastewater plant. So we're banking on us not getting dinged for that because it's a treat of.
Painting the road.
We're containing the runoff and treating it.
Yeah, good luck with that.
We will see.
North Hills Road is a transfer, DP permitted transfer station. So we are allowed to keep leaves there for short term. We can't keep them there permanently. So we take the leaves up there during leaf collection as our storage area. And then over the winter in between snowstorms, we haul those. Away to a processor that uses.
We brand them all up and spread them on the road? Let them wash away? Apparently that's okay.
It will kill the messenger.
All right.
Now you're just kind of pondering that the rest of the evening, aren't you?
I'm just, yeah, I'm just done.
Okay, under design already is our Spring and Sperry Park lighting and security upgrades. The, the bulk of the money is going to come in next year and the following year, we put six hundred thousand a year in for that until it gets designed. And goes under construction. These are the crossing replacements that I thought you were talking about earlier. And that is the three. Stormwater crossings that are failing within the township. I fully expect that we'll get to design from First Capital. In short order and. Get it out to bid. So to be between this coming year and the following year. Storm sewer rehabilitation, miscellaneously, this is the smaller of the bunch. And that is. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars next year and then a hundred fifty thousand each year after that. These are for identified storm sewers that we can't get in and fix with our concrete method. So they would be smaller than say. I don't want to send anyone in an eighteen inch. They have to go into bigger than that because we don't have anybody quite that thin and courageous. So those lines would get lined. Like we just have one getting done right now. That's right in front of the casino. So instead of shutting down the road for a number of days. It's a matter of having them come in and line it. So it's relatively expensive, but in certain situations, it's the best option.
Now, just to review something. So what I see in the community development, the line. Videotaping and, and assessments that they do.
I think they're identifying, if I'm not mistaken.
That picture there where you see the stone note, the bottom of the pipes no longer there. That's what the televising would find.
So the televising finds this in stormwater lines or.
Stormwater.
It just in the stormwater.
Well, we can, we can do it and everything, but anything that looks like that's going to be stormwater.
What I mean is their, their line televising is just stormwater. And you're, and then you budget then the improvements of those stormwater lines here in this line.
Okay.
How about the sewer lines? How do we maintain those? How do we get a look at them?
Well, we have a truck ordered right now that you guys graciously allowed me to purchase.
For that, for that televising.
Paid for until next year, right?
Well, no, that one, that one may be done this year. That maybe this year, that is probably going to get done this year. They have trucks in stock is getting the vehicles is the, the big thing, but they have trucks in the stock. So. I think they said six to eight weeks and that was a month ago. But we can do some amount of televising with that as well in stormwater pipes. Replace vehicle twenty five is a single axle dump. If we order that next year, hopefully we'll be able to get it in twenty five. If things improve, if not, that may push off to twenty six if we order it next year coming up. Next thing on the list, replace wood chipper. Our wood chipper is. Older than Mark.
That's a fact.
Was purchased originally. Was purchased originally for the making mulch from trees for the wastewater treatment plant. And has been re, reused by us throughout the years, and it's pretty rough. And it's about time for that to get replaced, so I put that in for twenty five.
Try it out on that property across from my house.
I think that would be a conflict of interest. I'm pretty not, pretty sure I can't do that.
Just a test.
Just test.
Oh, okay.
So the chief will get me for trespassing. Next is, uh, the matching vehicle lift put in for, for twenty five. To the one that we got last year, we had the in-ground list removed, so we had no oil in the groundwater or anything. And, uh, now we have above-ground lift. We have, wanna put another one in to match it. So both mechanics will have a lift that's being twenty five. Okay, uh, resurface the parking lots in the park. This was originally going to be sooner, but because we're gonna be cutting the lots up pretty badly to replace the lighting. Thought we would push this off until all of our trenches are patched and everything's ready to go. And then we can seal lots to make it monolithic looking again. All right, replace vehicle seventeen. This is our, our lift truck. It's, uh, surprisingly expensive to put a lift on a new truck. The lift we have has. Not modern safety equipment on it, let's just say. So that would be modern safety equipment. And again, that's only fifty percent of the body and the lift costs. And then it would be a leased vehicle as well. So some discussion may happen about. Like the bucket truck, that's not a leased vehicle, so we may have to discuss further that that would be a kept vehicle. Because of its expense.
So here on page forty eight, is this the existing truck with the lift and insufficient safety equipment?
We work on it to keep it safe, so it's safe to use, but they wouldn't be able to produce it now. Let's just say that.
Okay, all right. And the one we would get would be.
Equipment is what? Lockouts and, uh, and ball harnesses, attachment points?
Legs that come down and actually support the vehicle, yes.
Yeah.
Landing gear that come down. This doesn't have any of that. This was a scissor lift that was taken off the old truck and bolted in this truck. So. And that must have happened to, to, back in twenty thirteen, when it got moved over to this truck.
Yeah, that's probably, that I did improve the safety quality of this.
Yeah. They have some really nice lifts that articulate now. It's this one you have to put directly under what you wanna get up to. And the new ones with the feet to come down, you can go up and then you can slide side to side. You can actually slide the whole way out to be over traffic if you so decided to. So they're, they're very nice, but also very expensive. Replace vehicle twenty three, another single axle.
A question, is, is that something that we wanna move forward to twenty twenty four, or do you wanna leave it in the year that it is?
You have it in twenty six, don't you?
Yes, I have it in twenty six.
So. I don't like the idea of having unsafe vehicles out on the street.
I concur.
Um, I know the vehicle itself isn't unsafe, but. The working condition for whoever is using it. I'd be in favor of moving it.
I'm in favor of moving it, but I, I do wanna stress it's safe. It's just they wouldn't be able to sell it today. So there are, the new one will have better safety, but it's not like it's unsafe. If that makes sense.
It does, it does.
Do you feel comfortable with leaving it until twenty six?
I don't have a problem. If Terry and I could work on, I don't have a problem moving it to twenty five. I just wanted to stress that it's not unsafe. It's just not up to current standards, if that makes sense.
Does the newer truck give us better capabilities?
Oh, yeah. Just the ability to articulate is a big thing.
That lead to increased safety, increased productivity, what would be the benefit of that?
I would have, I mean, if I were pushed, I would say increase safety. I mean, our guys are very cautious when they use this truck so that they are safe with it. But. When you have a toy that does more things, sometimes you get complacent with how you're using it as well, so. Have to weigh those options. They know this one, what the limitations are. On a new one that they may try to push out, well, it should be safe no matter how far you can push it out the sides.
I mean, unless they do something that's unsafe. Piece of equipment.
Would it be better to have? It would certainly be better to have. Is it necessary? No, we're talking about a vehicle that goes out and uses its lift. Once a month, Mark?
Yeah.
Probably once a month.
Just for getting up the lighting and streetlights and.
Over, overhead signs.
Overhead signs are the big thing for this one. They do use it for, for streetlights.
Way a little bit further without. Blocking as much traffic.
Right. And when it gets to a point where, now, when it gets to a point where they're gonna have to be out off to the side. We would have them take the bucket truck instead, go down to wastewater, grab the bucket truck, but only one person can go up into that at a time.
All right.
So you wanna move it?
Take a look at it. If it's something that you can.
And if it is something that we can do, we'll just alert the board that we moved it.
Yeah, I mean. Sixty two thousand.
That's if we keep it a lease. If it's not a lease, because it's terribly expensive. The lift itself is over a hundred thousand dollars that goes on the truck. So it turns into a big number.
Truck and buy three or four of these.
What's that?
We'll look at it.
Okay, why don't we look at it? How about that?
Look at it.
We'll look at. A single axle dump, number twenty three, is a two thousand six, reaching the end of its life. Uh, we have that in to order in twenty five, get it in twenty six. Again, if things don't change, it may be order it in twenty five and get it in twenty seven. If things don't change from where they are right now. Replace our crack seal machine. Uh, our present machine is, uh, pretty old and we do a lot of repairs to the wand is the problem. So we've gotten very good at taking the wand apart and rewiring it to get it to work every year. But parts are very difficult, uh, it. It had some issues with a drive unit in it. We were able to, to modify the new drive. To put in it so that it would function last year. But every year seems to be a challenge with that. So that's a fifty thousand dollar piece. I have that out in twen- twenty six. Okay, our skid steer loader is, uh, a two thousand. And like to replace it with something more modern that has the high-flow capabilities. So that we would be able to, uh, rent other attachments like stump grinders and things like that for it. So that. Uh, we can not hire people to take stumps out and among other things. So that's out in twenty seven. Okay, that's all of Public Works. Any other questions? Brandy, Parks and Recreation.
I'll just try to keep it quick. Okay, for twenty twenty four, we have the Camp Security Park Master Plan. So we did receive, um, the award for this grant, but we do need to start working on moving the steps forward. For that, that is ninety five thousand, and that's supposed to strategize a long-term plan, working with camp security. In hand, making sure that they have a part in it, that they're a focus group within this master plan. And also to figure out, you know, out of this hundred and sixty-two acres, what is it that we can utilize? Because there is a lot of space and, and after conversations with that, with camp security already. There's definitely spots that won't be involved in their continual digs and, and those types of things as they, um, move forward in the future. So the idea between this master plan is just to figure that out so that we can get more utilization for our residents. The Fayfield Park Playground is twenty five thousand. Um, we actually won the grant for that and the park was delivered last week, so it is here. Um, Public Works has leaf collection coming up, so they're not gonna install a park tomorrow. But, um, it is ready. And the one thing I, I wanna talk about with the grant and this Fayfield Park Program. Actually, sort of goes into something that we have listed, I have listed. Um, for Pleasureville Park Improvement, so as I touch on that later. The reason we wrote this grant was for a removable playground. Um, with the eighty-three project, they'll be getting rid of this kind of playground and swapping the playground and the baseball field. Together, however, the equipment was unsafe. And so the actual park structure needed to be redone. And as they were designing it, I had asked them, is there a possibility for us to be able to pick this park up? Put it at Pleasureville or somewhere else for that matter, but in my mind. How do we not spend money on something and be able to, to get double value out of it? So we put that in and we won the grant funding, fully funded for this project. So, um, yeah, that, that is, that's for twenty twenty four.
So what's the twenty-five thousand for twenty twenty-four?
Well, what, the twenty-five thousand is the amount, we just have, bill came, it's actually twenty-seven and we were awarded twenty-eight. But I just, bill just came yesterday or the day before, I think.
So we're gonna move the whole thing to twenty-four, even though the equipment's here?
Because by the time we get the money and, and get it installed, it'll be in the twenty twenty-four. Cause we can't get that until it's installed. We're not gonna be able to install it right now.
Because of the leaf collection, uh, that makes sense, all right.
Yes. The next project listed is the park signage for all locations. So as you can see around the park right now, we have our new signage up. That was part of last year's capital improvement plan. And the continuation, um, goes for the next three years, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. And that's so that all of the parks have. Very similar signage. It's all black, red and white. It all has that. Same type of outline and every park will then say underneath a Spring and Sperry Township Park. So just like that picture shows Penn Oaks Park, a Spring, Spring and Sperry Township. Um, that should really tie together our neighborhood parks and, and some of our external parks to let everybody know. You know, we're a network of parks, not just Castle Park, which is beautiful, but also to have the rest of them, so. The next, um, item for twenty twenty-five is Rockburn Park Playground and the landscaping there. Um, it is a project that, you know, after reviewing the equipment and, and sending out some, taking some pictures of that. It's gonna be time to upgrade that park and replace the playground equipment there. When we start designing that, which design will probably happen at the end of twenty twenty-four, beginning of twenty twenty-five. For a capital improvement project starting in twenty twenty-five. And we will look for some grant funding as well as the rec planning. And then, as I had mentioned, um, we do have Pleasureville Park and Recreation Park Improvement Project. Um, this might tremendously go down in cost if we're. And when we're able to move Fayfield's Park over to Pleasureville Park. And also, um, upgrade some of. What's there currently? We do have park participants that go there every single year for our park program. And, um, God love these red shirts, they do it with a pavilion and a basketball court. So, uh, you know, having some equipment and, and checking out the landscape and things that we could do over there. Is part of, uh, the improvement plan for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And the last part was, is the disc golf for camp security for twenty twenty-seven. But, you know, without going into too much detail. I think that the camp security master plan will let us know if this is a good idea or not. Uh, before, before we move forward, um, it's something that we talked about with camp security. And I know it was brought to the board several years ago, um, in a, in a different manner. But with working with them and looking at the master plan, I think that we'll have a little bit more clarity on this. Portion of the project.
Get them involved early and often and we won't run into problems.
I spent a lot of time talking with, with Carol and, and, um, John, who is the architect. I gave him his first. Pardon me?
Are they receptive to working towards something like this?
They are receptive to working. They, they want a, a balance. So those things that they talked about that they're looking for is possibly having some type of pathway where we can. Put almost like our historic signs that we did in the park in the previous year and a half, having some placards that. Share what that is and trail and possibly a disc golf course to the side. And then, like I said, there's some unused land that they think that they will never touch. And so I think that master plan's gonna reveal a lot to us. But having them involved and letting them know from the very beginning, um, the architect was, I gave him his first internship. And so he, uh, and in his interview, he said, I wanna be an archaeologist. And I thought, where are you gonna do that here? And here we are, you know, fifteen years later, you know, he's working for, for camp security doing that. So he's really excited about working with the township and, and we're keeping them involved. Any other questions?
I, I have a question about the master plan.
Yes.
Um, you talk a lot about having friends of camp security involved. Is there community involvement in the development of that master plan?
Yes, they, they are just, you know, when I talk about, um, pods, they're one pod of, of it. You know, the township has, um, what they're looking for, the friends of camp security. We have, um, park and rec board members, we'll have border supervisor input as well. And citizen surveys were in there to make sure that, that the citizens are getting what they want as well.
Okay, thank you.
What plans or considerations have we done in, for the, uh, America two fifty PA? In terms of any park improvements or any, have we given any thought to that sort of planning?
Not quite yet.
How about bocce ball for the township park?
Actually, I did send Mark some information. Um, it was. Without having it in front of me, I don't wanna give you exact dates and times, but it was looked at, um, in regards to bocce ball. Um, the recommendation, I believe, was not to continue due to the amount of people wanting to play that. At the time, but that doesn't mean we can't relook at it and, and discuss it. I sent Mark all of the information that Wendell did, so he had a committee. He did some design stuff on it, whether it was covered or uncovered. Um, how many people were using it, I think. It showed the figures for Lancaster, how many people were currently doing it. And then, equipment, are they bringing their own equipment? Do we have permanent sites for equipment? Are they picking up at the township? Those types of questions were in there as well.
I'm gonna send somebody to you.
Okay.
So that they stop calling me every other week.
Okay, yeah. I, I mean, I will talk to anyone and then also invite them to our Parks and Rec, um, board meeting as well. We like to get input and, and how. Board meeting as well. We like to get input and and have a really open dialogue with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dennis, you're up again.
Back. Okay, it looks like we're moving on to intermunicipal sewer. So the wastewater plant, basically. First thing is a bio solids handling study. The equipment, the, how we handle our bio solids, it really hasn't changed since nineteen eighty fourish. So. Everything is taxed pretty hard right now for how much flow we have. So we produce more bio solids. So we're looking for Bucard Horn to do a study to. Have a more efficient way to handle our bio solids and hopefully reduce the mass that we're. At this point, we're putting onto farm fields, we're land applying. Next, that was, sorry about that, hundred seventy thousand dollars next year.
That's just for the study.
Just for the study. This is the realignment of the Mill Creek Interceptor. This is an ongoing project. It's. It's happening right now and it's earliest forms. So we have a million dollars a year for two years and then four hundred thirty five thousand, we sort of broke it up within. Estimating how much we'll get done a year. So that's why that's in the plan. This is along eighty three where it goes. East, west. Okay, we need to look at upgrading our secondary clarifiers. Again, they're from nineteen eighty four as well. And they have been showing some signs of corrosion. Now, our guys do a really good job of pulling them down every year and trying to take care of the corrosion. But they're getting to the point where they really need to. Have some of the steel replaced and. Make them more modern, basically. So that's for twenty four, we're looking at two hundred thousand and. Probably one point seven million to actually get into the, from design to then get into the real construction of that.
Now, one point seven is for all of them.
Yeah, there's four of them. There's four of them at this point. Now, it may be a recommendation to add, but that's sort of. We'll have to see where that leads us.
Is it possible that that could spread out over time to do all four at once? Or or would you do it one at a time?
No, you would, you would let a contract to do all four at one time. Now, they do them one at a time, mind you, but. You want the equipment all to match, excuse me.
That run into multiple years, like would this cost get spread into twenty six?
Anything's possible at this point. The supply chain, it's hard to, the issues, it's hard to say, but I'm assuming that they would be able to get these parts.
I'm looking at a view that doesn't give me a good picture into how the spread of funds are, so.
What's that?
No, not just that one. I mean, all the rest of them.
These are. This, like, what Danny is. Suggesting, recommending is all equipment. It's not structural, so it's not concrete, it's not. Excavation, it's drain the tank and replace all the metal parts, if you will. So I, I don't know that it would spread into more than one year. Are we good?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Upgrading the ultraviolet disinfection equipment. That's two hundred fifty thousand dollars next year. All of the. Of that rack you see in that picture with they're pulling out, there's electronics in those racks. The electronics in each rack are no longer supported and they're going to solid state equipment now. So for us to continue with our UV, we almost, we pushed it off a year or so, but we need to replace the electronics in each rack. That fires the lights and tests how much intensity and everything else. Two hundred fifty thousand for this coming year.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm not sure if you're generating a question or not.
No, I'm on the last one. Looks like twenty five has. Six and a half million dollars worth of work and twenty six has three point six five roughly. So if that one point seven started later in the year and half of it went the other year, would that spread things out a little bit and make it? Just, just a thought.
Could happen.
Could happen.
Could happen. As fast as things are going right now, could happen, or slowly, in other words. Okay, the next is for next year, seventy five thousand dollars, replace the roof on the existing collection building, which is at the back of the. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we use it for storage, but the roof has been repaired a number of times and it continues to leak. So that is for a replacement of that. Of that leaky roof, I should say. Next would be for twenty twenty five. We have one older loader. We have the one we just bought this year. And this would be to replace the older loader with one that matches the new. Cat that we just purchased this year. So we would have matching loaders again. That's in twenty twenty five.
So that will be a caterpillar, not a Volvo?
Well, my intentions would be to do it with the cat. That's a cat price. That's. Everything that we had before, so. And I believe the final thing for that wasteful for wastewater plant is a bio, bio solids containment improvements. It's hard for me to say. This is all beyond twenty twenty eight, one point five million dollars. And there's a lot that. That goes into this. One, how much bio solids are we going to be getting at that point? Because of the study that's coming up, but as we are right now, we're sitting today with all of our bins full. So luckily. In a few days, we can start taking to a farm and store probably two bins worth, but if not, we'd be out on the pad storing and covering. Because this time here, you can only land apply between crops and. This is, this is the hard part of the year to. When you start building up bio solids and you have to hold it. Any questions on wastewater? Okay. Spring is very township wastewater. We have been hitting the Fayfield neighborhood relatively hard the last three years. And this coming year, we are going to hit it again. Eight hundred fifty thousand dollars worth and we should, we may be able to finish it this year, then the. The twenty twenty five would go to another neighborhood, but we left it in because. It may take that to get through it because we keep running, we run into pipes that. Can't be just lined. They have to dig up and do certain repairs to them because they're too wet. Which is good that we're getting it out, but it becomes more costly per foot when you start getting into that. So it's eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for next year and the following year, eight hundred ninety four thousand dollars. We did an estimate of all the linear footage and. Figured out from there. So that is sanitary sewer. Then we have miscellaneous sanitary sewer. There for ones that we find along the way, if there's root intrusions. In one year and it causes a backup into a house. Especially if it causes a backup into a house, we have to line it the following year so that we can't, so that we're doing everything we can. To not have this happen to someone's house. The first, the first time it happens to someone's house. It's sort of an act of God. The second time. We didn't take care of it, so we owe money. At least that's the. Way the insurance companies look at it. So we keep a hundred fifty thousand a year in for those lines that we would. Find have roots that are backed up, that every year. We go through our list and they all get lined so that we don't have root intrusions and then again. Sort of gets them to the top of the list.
So you might not have this here, Danny, but is there a way we can graphically see how we're doing in terms of our line replacement? Are we ahead of a long term schedule? Are we aligned on a long term schedule? You mentioned Fayfield is taking a little longer of what you're finding, but. Is there a way we could kind of get that sense in a nutshell?
I could certainly come up with a map for you for what we've done so far. I. I have some rudimentary ones that we work off.
Yeah, that might be interesting, just to digitize that, to get us a little sense of where we are, because obviously if we're, we're running behind, we have to throw more at it.
Yeah. Well, we, we do what we can afford to do is what it comes down to, you know. You can do this forever.
Oh, I know we will.
And we will do it forever in different. Yeah, sections of the township. There's a lot of sewer out there and. Short of replacing it all, this is the most cost effective way to do it.
Right.
Get it tighter.
Right, I get that. I support the effort. I just want to try to get that sense of how, how we're doing.
I'll have to grab that map and see if I can get it out to you guys.
Yeah, that would be cool to see.
Okay.
At least that, I'm interested.
All right. Grinder pump replacements, sixty five thousand dollars in this coming year. Diane and I are talking about exactly when that's going to bid. It's. On my desk and I just needed the specs yet to review it. But that should go out to bid very shortly here. So the, this is the township owned grinder pumps. There's only five of them. So it's not, you know, a huge amount of it. If neighborhoods have grinder pumps now. It's their own, their own grinder pumps. They, the homeowners must maintain them. But for some reason over the years, maybe. When projects got done, there had to be one or two grinder pumps on them and the township took responsibility for them. Because they put them in. We tried to give them back to the people, tell them that we're going to replace them for you, but then they're yours. Nobody really jumped at that. I tried with every one of them.
All of them is good at that.
You can try, but it's hard to tell them. You know, you give them the option, hey, you might want to do this. This is a great thing. You own it. And we had one gentleman that. Didn't like us in his yard, didn't like us stopping in to check it. Said, I can fix that. And I thought for sure. That he'd be the first one to sign on the dotted line to take it over. Apparently he talked to his wife and. He showed him the other perspective to us taking care of it versus him taking care of it. East York Pump Station Valve Replacement, that again is about ready to bid. That was estimated at four hundred and forty thousand dollars. That'll be. Bid very shortly as well. Replacement of our manhole frames and covers to the adjustable versions. We've been doing about a hundred thousand, little over a hundred thousand a year in these things. And if installed correctly. There's the caveat, if installed correctly, they're very smooth. So. At this point, we are going to continue with these.
Putting on Zion, we had the low cost better.
Mount Zion, we. Met with them, met with the state's contractor twice ahead of construction. I went out one night during construction, but they weren't paving. Yeah, I think I saw you out there that night. And then when they installed them incorrectly with the scratch coat. We met with them again and told them what they had to do to fix their problem, which they did, except. They still didn't install them correctly at the. So the new rule that I've been told is. Anytime anybody's putting them in, I have to have staff there. It's in the middle of the night. I have to have staff there just to instruct them.
So they're not going to go back and fix them?
No, no.
The way they are.
No.
Are we allowed to at least paint white rings around them so before we fall into the abyss?
Oh, no, no, no. This is, yeah, you could fall into the catch bases. You're probably not going to fall into the sanitary sewer manholes. I don't know what they're going to do to fix them.
Yeah, what if, that was my next question. They still have cones up and and. Red or orange fencing around them.
I have not a clue on how they're going to fix them.
Do they have a clue?
I have no idea. I'm not in the loop when it comes to that. But I dread someone hitting one of those deep ones.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what they're going to do to fix that. I don't know why the state isn't, and maybe they are throwing their hands up going crazy. I, I don't know. Another neighborhood, Yorkshire neighborhood for lining. Have that out at twenty six. And North Hills Road, North Hills Road was identified years ago as a leaky line right down the middle of the road. I think we went to try to have that done once before and nobody wanted to touch it because of the traffic control that would be required. It's not going to get any better, but we're going to have to try again to get. All the lines down North Hills Road televised or not televised, we did have them televised but lined. And then we follow up with Haynes Acres Neighborhood. There is a common theme here. We do keep moving off in the future, but this lining will go on for. My career and probably all of Mark's. So we're at eight hundred fifty thousand for twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight in the Haynes Acres Neighborhood for lining. And beyond. Any questions?
Got to do it.
Got to do it. Why don't I fast enough?
If there aren't any questions, we'll move on to the operating budget. But I don't want to jump to that until board's ready.
Okay, we're going to review the twenty twenty four preliminary budget. The first item. We'll review the, the budget process. We'll take a look at the budget totals by fund. I would like to identify the budget reporting changes from this year compared to last year. We'll take a look at the revenue summary and expenditure summaries for twenty twenty four for the general fund. We'll review the fund balance history and where we stand today. We'll take a second look at the capital improvements plan, just overview. We have the sewer fund and then the next step. So what needs to follow? For the budget process, the budget process is actually a lengthy process beginning in July. And extends through December, looking for an approval from the board at our December meeting. The capital improvements planning starts the process. In July and then we move through the preliminary budget planning in August. In September, all of the directors meet with the township manager and we review the budget line item by line item. So. A lot of detail and a lot of discussion is involved with each department. As we move into October, we finalize the five year capital improvements plan and prepare the preliminary budget, which brings us here to the budget work sessions. The November meeting, the township manager will, will provide a budget presentation for the community at that time. And then we'll move to the December meeting with hopefully an approval from the board of supervisors. With the funds prepared in this budget, the general fund. Totals twenty million, thirty four thousand, five hundred and two dollars. The liquid fuels fund totals eight hundred twenty four thousand, six hundred thirty three dollars and that's one hundred percent state funded. The subdivision recreation reserve fund, we have expenditures. The subdivision recreation reserve fund, we have expenditures estimated at one hundred and twenty-five thousand. The petition street light fund expenditures are approximately ninety-eight thousand five hundred. The capital improvements fund, six point nine million. The stormwater MS four water quality is two hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars in expenditures. The sewer fund operating costs and expenditures total just just under thirteen million dollars. And then other funds total three thousand two hundred dollars. With all funds, the total budget estimated at forty-one million two hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And how does that compare to last year? The twenty twenty-three budget total funds was forty-five million three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. And the difference really comes into the capital improvements plan where we had larger projects in last year. The reporting updates for twenty twenty-four budget. First of all, the general fund we're presenting this this evening is a balanced budget. The gaming revenue is included in our revenue at one point eight million dollars. We've also included American Rescue Plan Act funding of one million thirty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars to support fire and rescue services. And we also have some grant funding in included. The capital improvements fund, we're still waiting for the three point five million dollars to come in from RAC P. And we expect that that three million dollars that is located in our capital improvements fund will replenish our reserves because right now we are spending some reserves as we wait for that funding to come in. The Davies Drive construction also completed in twenty twenty-three. We expect the reimbursement of expenditures for that project. For water quality, we touched on that. We are waiting for the East Tributary project that is on hold until the permits are in place. And we have the wastewater treatment West Tributary. There is general maintenance on an annual basis. That's included in our MS four budget. For the sewer fund, we would like to continue conversation about increasing operating increasing the sewer utility rates at our next work session next week. And that's due to the increasing operating costs where we're seeing much higher increases over inflation rates, especially with our chemicals that are used on a daily basis. The compensation plan updates, we included a three percent increase for non-union employees. All contract increases apply for Teamsters and police personnel. This year, we are experiencing a ten and a half percent increase in health benefits, healthcare benefits, and three point three percent increase for Teamster healthcare benefits, and both of those increases are included in this budget. Next, for the general fund, our revenue totals twenty million thirty-four thousand five hundred and two dollars. Our tax revenue makes up sixty-six point five nine percent of that revenue. And just a reminder that intergovernmental revenue includes gaming revenue as well as the ARPA funds. For expenditures for the general fund, we are balanced. Our expenditures total twenty million thirty-four thousand five hundred and two dollars. The public safety accounts for fifty-one point nine six percent of our budget, and that includes both police and fire coverage. The administration expenditures total includes two point eight million dollars in transfers to the capital improvements plan or capital improvements fund for gaming revenue as well as the debt service. Budget notes for the general fund. It was strongly encouraged to try and create a budget for twenty twenty-four with a proposed tax decrease for municipal taxes. We were able to do that and it was difficult to do, but we we worked it out. The balance of the general fund budget is balanced. The department changes for administration experienced a ten point nine percent increase, and that's coming from health benefits and contract services. Finances increased at ten point eight percent. That's through personnel costs. IT is a decrease of nineteen to nineteen point two percent. And that's from twenty twenty-three additional relocation costs as well as upgrades that we did. For community development, there's a decrease of point four percent, and you'll find that in legal, engineering, and the comprehensive plan expenditures. For police, there's an increase of three point six percent. For fire and rescue, there's an increase of two point three percent. Public works, an average increase of five point six six percent over the eight categories in public works. Parks and Recreation is three point two percent. And then the transfer to capital, like I said before, includes debt service and gaming revenue. As a reminder, for real estate taxes, we thought it might be a good idea just to review the taxes for property taxes. The municipal tax for Springsberry Township, the current rate twenty twenty-three is one point seven mils. It is the only tax rate that is governed by the township and that is benefits our operations. And the last increase was in twenty eighteen. The county tax rate for twenty twenty-three is currently six point nine mils, and the last increase was twenty twenty-two. The municipal and county taxes are billed together and they are billed in February. For the school districts, they are on a fiscal year. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for York Suburban School District, the tax rate is twenty-five point six eight five eight mils. And for York, Central York, it's twenty-one point eight seven mils. The tax rates have increased each year and the school taxes are billed in July. All the tax rates are available from the York County Assessment Office. In looking at building the budget, we have actually built in a tax rate decrease from one point seven mils to one point five mils. The general fund history, this is our fund balance over the years. The township ordinances require an emergency fund balance to equal ten percent of the current budget. For twenty twenty-four, we would be required to have over two million dollars in our reserve. And our budget health, our accounts are very healthy at this at this point in time. Next, we have the capital improvements plan for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. We have built into the budget six million three hundred forty thousand eight hundred and five dollars. And next, the sewer fund, we have a discussion next week about a rate increase for twenty twenty-four. Our current residential rate is at seventy-five dollars per quarter. The commercial rate is eighty dollars per quarter. And the use consumption rate is three dollars per one thousand gallons over twenty-two thousand seven hundred. Our number of customers that are billed, just under eighty-six hundred customers per quarter. And our twenty twenty-three annual billing came in at four point three million dollars. As I mentioned, we have increasing operational costs. We have continuous maintenance and of course, capital improvements that we just went through for the next five years. The last rate increases for sewer fund was this past year, January first was increased by five dollars per quarter. And the previous rate increase was January first, twenty eighteen, which was five dollars per quarter. And then finally, the forecast. What are the potential variables? Right now, with revenue change in our economy, we have made adjustments for inflation. Our redevelopment projects have slowed because of finance financing rates. And our real estate sales are down this year compared to the past two or three years. Our revenue opportunities continue to be grant funding and also corporate financial support in sponsoring our events, especially in the recreation area. For expenditures, our healthcare costs are included in the twenty twenty-four budget. Our post-retirement medical costs for police, we have estimated one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's of course is variable depending on the claims coming in. We have an experiencing escalating costs and supply chain delays as we've mentioned. We have higher interest rates and long-term financing rates are higher. We have the question mark of unfunded state mandates that are passed on to the local municipalities. And in the case of a catastrophic event, could be detrimental to our budget. Any questions?
So if I understand this correctly, the homeowner that has an assessed value of a hundred thousand dollars is going to pay twenty dollars less with regard to this this budget based on real estate taxes to the township. However, last year we increased their sewer bills five dollars per quarter or twenty dollars. So that's it's pretty much match.
Correct.
It was a good story though.
It is still a good story. I'm just understanding the facts from a financial perspective. And now we're talking about a potential increase this year to the sewer. That's what you're looking at. Do I understand some of those sewer costs that you're talking about the operating costs because of inflation, chemicals and so forth? Are they volatile in price? They could go back down if we see?
At this point, we haven't seen any price decreases, Danny. There's.
That's some wishful thinking, but I have not seen that yet. In fact, our polymers for our solids handling, for our centrifuges and our gravity belt thickener, they won't even bid like we were going to put it out to bid this year. And they said, no, none of the manufacturers, they just said.
They're not willing prices.
Go off Co-Stars. It's bid through Co-Stars, so that's that has an inflation into their index built in. So.
That's the lowest they're going to go.
They're not.
And to just put perspective on that statement, we used to bid five-year contracts and back in the late nineties, early two thousands, five years at the same price, all five years.
Right.
To now, they won't even bid anything. They won't even do a one year.
Buy it at the current rate.
You buy that the current rate, the state that they bid through the state. So there's escalations in that. It's not as straightforward as we would say, okay, give us a price for the next five years. They won't even consider that.
We'll get into that a little more next next Monday when we go over the sewer fund in greater detail.
I have a couple of questions. I'm going to kind of work backwards in your charts though. First one is, you mentioned one of the potential variables for expenditures being higher interest rates. Isn't all of our debt locked in though at a rate or is there floating?
Yes, all of our debt is locked in. The variable comes in if we have to borrow funds today or more funds in the future. That's.
Hopefully do a wastewater treatment project.
Correct. A long-term project right now would be much higher than what our locked-in rates have been for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Is it possible to get a, and maybe it's just a one-line item, but the fund balance that we have, which is showing over nine million, how that's invested?
Okay, I can do that for you.
Rates that we're making on that? Point two mil decrease, how many dollars is that? Maybe Charles and everybody knows that answer, but overall, what's that dollar?
Twenty dollars on a hundred thousand assessed value.
I mean, what's the total assessed?
The total assessed value actually has increased over last year's assessed value because we had some very large property sales. So the assessment has gone up. The a point one mils equals about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So you're looking at four sixty, four hundred sixty thousand.
Absent an increase in the property values as you talked.
Correct. So there's, yeah, there's, yeah. It's a little higher than what it had been.
That's the last time that we increased it, we were saying roughly two hundred thousand per tenth of a mil.
My last question, and maybe this is an executive session, Mark, I'll leave it to your discretion, but the compensation for non-union that we put in here. Is that administered equally across the board or is that just a pool of dollars?
Pool of dollars. We've always, the township, as long as I can remember. So when I say always, as long as I can remember, have been, that sets the pool of money. And then everything else is based. Sets the pool of money and then everybody is based on merit.
So that gives you flexibility. For example, if you have someone who's not, their wages are competitive with the marketplace to make the adjustments you need to get there.
Correct.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Is three percent enough?
I wrote that down. I didn't want to say it publicly, but it's a far cry from what we hear at YALF.
Fine line, we won't. Questions?
I just want to make a comment and applaud the group for Terry and Mark and all of the directors contributing to the budget and posing us a first tax cut to the real estate taxes. Thank you for your effort.
Thanks for listening to us when we were talking about that all year long.
Actually, while I'm talking, since I brought up YALF, I would like to make one comment that at least plant a seed for this board as to whether or not perhaps we need to add a line item to next year's budget, which is not in here. And I'll just say, this is, you know, there are three representatives we have from this board that attend the YALF meeting. So what I'm about to share is my personal perspective. I'm one of three. The budget that's been presented for next year, I think is a good budget, fair budget. But as I look into my crystal ball for what's going to be presented next year at this time, I think there's a lot of red flags that lie ahead for YALF. And what concerns me the most is an issue we've been talking about for a long time now. And that's the governance structure of YALF. And I'll just say from my personal perspective, it's night and day sitting in a Springsberry board meeting versus sitting at a YALF meeting in terms of what's presented, in terms of analysis and questions, the detailed level of questions that are asked or not asked. And I say that from the perspective that the longer I serve in that board, the less confidence I have that there's going to be any change willingly made on the governance structure. I know we've been pushing for that for some time. I don't see the other municipalities that we participate with seeing it the way that we do in terms of there being a need for change to governance structure. All of which leads me to the conclusion that perhaps it would be in our best interest to at least understand as a township, what our other options are for providing level of fire service in Springsberry. And I don't know that we would have the resources internally to do that. So what I'm at least putting out there as an idea is perhaps looking at hiring a consultant to help us take a look at. You know, if we, if we can't start working better with our YALF partners, what are their options? Do we have to make sure we're providing the level of fire service to our residents that we need to at a price that they expect to pay or can afford? So just want to throw that out there. I mean, like I said, there's some things next year in YALF or there's a contract that ends the end of next year. I know they have some major capital expenditures expenditures planned for twenty twenty-five and beyond. I'm just have some concern about the governance structure there being able to plan for those accordingly. So I'll just leave it at that.
George? Other comments? All right, if we're at the end of the presentations, I need to open up the floor for public comment. Sue, you got anything for us? I don't see anybody in attendance, either virtually or in the room, that would qualify as public. That doesn't have another voice here already. So with that, thank you all very much for the hard work that you put into this. Appreciate it. All of us do.